I'm gonna open our meeting for January, for the planning board for January 22, 2020. Because we have a couple of quick items that don't require public hearings and I don't want, I don't need you guys to sit here and watch everything else. I'm gonna move ahead and we're gonna look at the, an A and R. We have two A and Rs and we wanna pull those.
Yep.
Yep, we have.
For him. You wanna?
Well, I didn't know if, first, you wanted, you wanted to deal with the bond reduction from Mr. Green.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
The first item on the, yeah.
We won't make the way in here either.
Perfect.
That's fine.
This is the, this is the bond reduction. It had been submitted in December 9th, was my oversight, that I didn't get it on the agenda for the last meeting, bond reduction. If you look at the, uh, reduction, so there could be a reduction of $169,000, $169,184 from the original $307,623. A new, uh, large amount of work has been done on the project. So actually, I received on Monday yet another bond reduction, a reduction for continued work, but that was based on this one, so this one has to be approved before we can do the next one, so.
We can't do both tonight?
No, we can't do both because that number is based off from this one, so we have to do the next one at the next meeting.
And Mike, uh, is happy?
Yes, with this. And he also has approved the next bond reduction, but like I said, I didn't receive it until Monday, so.
Is there any comment from the highway superintendent?
Um, not as of yet. Before its final, if there will be, if, if there's any issue there yet. I've been in contact with him, so he is aware of the project. He's been keeping an eye on it himself, so he is aware of what's going on up there and the progress that's being made.
All right.
So far, he has not had any issues as of yet, so.
All right, great.
Is the, so the reduction?
It's just, yeah, there was a mathematical error on the typing, typo for grade engineering. If you look at the final number at the, on the accounting page, the final page, it's, the net change was $169,184.
So they're looking for the 169, for us to release 169?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody has this one.
Yeah, the final paving on the road's been done, the trees have been planted, a lot of work has been done as the state in the grades report.
Has any of the other board men up there?
I took it right there. Looks nice.
Perfect.
Did a good job.
If Mike's happy, I'm happy. Any comments or questions or?
It's all here.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Is there any public comment?
We need public, it's not really a standing public hearing.
Make a motion, reduce the current bond by $169, $169,184.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Mike, if you can answer?
So, Randy, you put me on the agenda on the next one?
Cause the next bond reduction won't be at our next meeting yet.
No, that's fine.
Yep.
Cause they actually added a few things in, you know, some of the curvings and other stuff.
Right, right, I see that.
Just so you guys know, the edges with it marked up, they added some stuff back in, so, all right?
Right.
Yeah. Can you email me that? The letter?
Oh, to the, yes.
To me, so I can forward it to the bank so they can release it.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna kinda skip over this zero point stuff, then we'll go right to the A and Rs and... Whatever one would e-brout. Yep, that one, that one.
Uh, yeah, two A and Rs. The first one is, um, actually, uh, what it is, is just, like, property on North Main Street, they're actually doing a land swap, the family owns both parcels of land, and they're planning to sell one of the lots, so they do so, um, they're taking a portion of, moving, making a lot line adjustments, taking a portion of land from one lot, giving it to the other lot, so this lot can be sold. It's at the junction of Putnam Road Extension and North Main Street. There's two single-family homes that are side by side, they have, one's owned by the children, the other one's owned by the parents, and they're selling the parents' property. And the children property taking across it, so both lots will be a conforming lot once it's completed, so they'll be able to sell their parent's lot.
Those in the village district?
Excuse me?
Village district?
Yes.
I can't see, how many square, how much square foot is each lot?
Proposed lot will be, uh, um, one lot is gonna be $82,000 and change, the other one's gonna be $94,000 and change.
More than that.
So it's basically, you could take two acres from both parcels.
You have two big lots?
Yeah.
Okay, there's only two lots, right?
So, yeah, so there's no new lots being created, it's just a thing, it's a land swap from one property to the other. Yep.
Do we have a motion to?
Let's make a motion to approve the A and R. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do we have, do we have the, the guy's call?
Okay, we have, it's family unite with the A and R. We have another, um, family, uh, A and R, which basically is the same situation where they're, um, not creating new lot, they're taking a lot from one property and, uh, adding the land to it where it's already, uh, developed property with a single-family home, which in turn will need a vacant lot for a house to be built. Both the, the lots are in the agricultural district, they both will be conforming lots, no new lots will be created, so it's again, the lot line adjustment from just moving the lot line over to make one lot possible larger and the other one smaller. It's at the corner, Richardson Corner Road and Turner Road.
Pretty clean, Mike. Do we have a motion to accept this?
Here's a motion next up, the A and R.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You guys gonna take the plans?
Yes, please.
Okay, we can... Steven Green?
Yes.
Do you wanna?
Aye.
See, we would bump you up this way.
Thank you.
Quick on that.
Appreciate that. Uh, so, I think Randy reached out to me, I was, I was looking for a, uh, the, um, an extension for my site, site plan approval at 16 Worcester Road. So, you know, a year, a number of years ago, we did get, you know, site plan approval, and, you know, basically the economy, you know, sort of turned down and things didn't, you know, it wasn't a good time to do anything. So, at this point, you know, I'm not sure a whole lot has changed in that area, um, so I would like to basically, you know, get an extension. You know, one, one hindrance they do have, and I mentioned that to Randy in emails, you know, there may be water lines in front, but there's, but there's no access to water. So, you know, the approval that I have is for an 18,000 square foot building, and so it requires sprinklers, and without, you know, town water, there's no, there's no way, it's not feasible to, you know, to put up a building at that point, so, um, that's something the town has to deal with.
So there is a water line up there?
The water lines are there, yep, they just, you know, I always assess veteran fees for the water lines, um, and, you know, every year I'll inquire at the sewer, the water sewer commission, and, you know, I'm told that, uh, that's just not possible right now. Do we have that gentleman?
We have that gentleman here.
He could probably speak to it better than I can.
Yeah, unfortunately, that water line from, I guess that's Stafford Street on, in the section of Stafford Street and Route 20 down through 169 is not active. And there's no plans because there's not enough usage to get enough flow through that line to keep the water quality where we need it to be, there's no plans, it's time to activate that line. Unfortunately, there, it's not able for Mr. Green to connect. And he, there's a water line going up Carpenter Hill Road a little bit, but his property doesn't butt that portion of Carpenter Hill Road, so he couldn't go get it from there either.
Yeah, I think the question came along, it's, it's a pretty old site plan.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's, the site plan has been active for?
Yeah, probably 10, I mean, 15, 16.
So, I mean, the question I had was, is, has enough changed in town that that site plan is still valid? Is it, is it, we've gone through some changes and?
I think he, he's pretty, you're pretty good about thinking the continuance for, so it's still active.
Still active?
Yeah, without a doubt. It's, it's still active, yeah, but I get to your point, I mean.
Is it, is it still a viable, val-?
Right.
A viable site plan?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think a whole lot's changed in that respect, I mean, you know, I mean, I'm guessing, you know, an engineer may need to look at it again, you know, at some point, but.
I mean, the, like, the issue is when we extend, we also give them the grandfathering rights, and correct me if I'm wrong, from the original site plan, so as things change, it doesn't, it doesn't stay up to date with our, with, then his only change is?
If anything new goes in, he's not, well, yes.
He wouldn't have to comply with the term by laws.
It would be what was affected when he?
Because the site plan only freezes for two years, but as we extend it, we're giving them those, that option.
So, that's where my question is, I mean, it's been out there for 10 years, we haven't worked out for 10 years, a lot of things have changed in the, in the past 10 years, and, and to re-review that site plan, I think is, would be beneficial to the town?
I mean, it's, I mean, it's not residential, obviously, it's commercial, so I, I don't know what's changed.
I mean, Route 20, I think that there could be potential changes with the, with our, a new kind of overhaul, but I, I, but probably those changes aren't going to affect a build, this type of building, I mean, we would never take it away, I think the thing we would give, there'd be more options with the, with the changes, so with the, with the more options, there, there may be a new site plan, if that makes any sense, I can't imagine we would be more stringent on Route 20.
Mm-hmm.
I think we would wanna be more creative through 20, but we'll, but we'll see, it's still a little risk, it's a, it's a one, it'd be a one-year extension.
Right. So, let's extend it for another year if anything major happens, and by next year, if something has changed?
I think it'd be good, I should avoid to at least look at what we have for a current site plan there and see what it, what it should look like.
It might be viable for the act, too, you give him a year while we're doing our overhaul, that he might, it might give him more opportunities to find a more viable option to do something with the problem.
I mean, and hopefully the water, I'm hoping at some point the water line is, is gonna be active, I mean, it's, uh, sitting there.
Perhaps we should have the plan and look at it before we?
By next year, right, if it comes up?
Or whatever was filed originally, is it?
I mean, I can, I'm happy to bring it, you probably have, I can probably copy by if, if that's all.
Yeah, we have.
We have, okay.
I'm not opposed to extend it for a year, but by, by next year, let's take a look at it and make sure that it's still viable and still?
And again, maybe by next year, with changes, you'll have a whole new idea that fits perfectly or, you know.
I agree, but, again, I hate to keep operating, but.
Yeah, I, we get water.
I mean, is your particular use the reason why the building needs to be sprinkled, or the size?
The size.
Twelve thousand square feet?
Yeah. It's bad, yeah, it's larger than that.
Any thought to shrink it, the size of it?
There is, but then, you know, it matters if it, you know, is it cost-effective, you know, I mean, I'd have to get down below, I think, 10,000 square feet, you know, um, so, then at that point, you know, the develop, you know, the site, the site cost and the land cost, you know, is it, is it feasible to, um, I'm not, I'm not saying it's out of the question, but, but it, you know, becomes a bit more difficult, it's less square footage in terms of, um.
Yeah, it depends on your customer, that you have.
Exactly, yeah.
Gotcha.
So, again, even, even still, it'd still be on a well, it'll still be a well, which, it's gonna limit, you know.
Oh, the public water supply.
And, and, you know, because it's a well, I have, it has to be tested every month, you know, there's, there's a lot of costs that go along with it, too, that really, you know, make it difficult to, you know.
Do we have a motion to bring in an extension to January 20th, 2021?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need?
I'll say. Thank you.
We got the 710.
We have the water supply question.
Have a seat right here.
Take a close up, yeah.
Let's wait for Randy to pull up one of the maps.
Wouldn't it, it would be even really creepy if we could actually see ourselves on the TV while the movie's on.
All right, so I guess I'm here for the annual water and sewer update, usually, well, one of the board members does this, but they weren't interested, so I'm here to share what we've been up to. Uh, you'll see the water map up in front of you at this, right, right now. So our current water infrastructure is all the purple, blue, and green water line. The light blue water line that you see, I guess that'd be in the southwest quadrant, is the very corner road extension that was installed over the last two years. It is installed and has all, we have 76 new residents who have been connected to that water line extension, it's approximately three and a half miles. As you look to the center of town, just south of Route 20, you'll see that blue loop that comes off of North Main Street, goes down Old Worcester Road, south on Morton Station, hits the two schools, and then heads back west on Mugget Hill Road, that's the school loop, that's currently being installed, um, as part of the ExxonMobil Water Agreement. So ExxonMobil is working with Albany's Brothers to get that water line installed. All of that water line has been installed this past construction season, so most of the roadwork in that area is completed. There have been no service connections done to this point, that will start next construction season, and also the repaving of all of those roads will take place, so that should clean up that whole area. As well as those roads, we also ran water line, I guess, west of Masonic Home Road, up to the Masonic Home. We, ExxonMobil ran water line down L. Stevens Road, the little cut across from Route 20 over to North Main, and also north of Route 20, between Route 20 and Stafford Street on H. Putnam Road. So all those should be active next year, they should be performing residential connections at that time. The Bay Path High School and the Overlook, because of their elevation, require individual pump stations, so there's enough pressure for them to operate and use the water, those are currently being designed and should be installed, hopefully by the spring. So, the Masonic Home is a, is a very integral one, because they use approximately 40,000 gallons of water per day, so they're the large user, that is gonna circulate enough water through all those water lines to keep the water quality where we need it to be, so it doesn't go stagnant and give us residual issues. So, again, those are, those, those small individual pump stations are currently being built and should be delivered within the next month, installed and hopefully operational. And again, with the Overlook being the priority, that should, we're told, should be online the end of April, which will allow us to activate that entire school loop, and then start doing the residential connections for those residents who wanna connect in that area. So, with that light blue as part of the school loop, we're looking at approximately seven miles of new water line that was installed this past construction season. Uh, we've been very fortunate with the residents, uh, they've been very cooperative, very patient in dealing with this construction, dealing with the interaction with the contractor, and dealing with the, I guess, traffic rerouting plans based on when the construction was taking place, so we definitely appreciate their cooperation with that. I guess the only other thing we have going on, well, a couple other things. Right now, the town of Charlton owns all of that infrastructure, but the town of Southbridge operates it. So, we're currently, um, considering becoming a consecutive water supply and also operating in the system as a consecutive water supply from the town of Southbridge. So we're doing a cost, cost value analysis, um, to try and determine if it's cost effective for us to do so, and negotiate with Southbridge at this time, to see if we can take over operations as well as with the ownership of the, of the water line. So, if you look at the original water line that was installed back in 2003, 2004, was the Route 20 water line, when they did the Route 20 reconstruction from Route 169 all the way to the town line. So, and that's part of the water line that's in front of Mr. Green's property, and because it does not connect, it, it deadends before the bridge at Route 169 on Route 20, it doesn't connect to the rest of the water line that heads west on Route 20 towards the Sturridge Line. So that's why we can't just activate that water line and have it continue to go all the way into, I guess, the western portion of town.
So we need a big, we need a big user?
So depending on, depending on what he gets for a user, if it qualifies as a large enough user, we can activate the water line down to his property, depending where he ties in.
Like on the west, on the west side, so like the Proudy property or something like that, is that what you're talking about?
No, Mr. Green's property.
Green County.
Depending what he gets for a use in that building he has proposed, if it's a thousand gallon per day use, that might be enough to say, all right, we can activate the line, the turnover would be great enough that, that we don't have any water quality issues.
So, something typically like, I'm sorry, like a restaurant use, where they're using water is, is a better suited use than say, I don't know, a clothing store or?
Yes, definitely. But again, you have to take who's ready to come in.
Right, right, of course.
Unfortunately, at this time, there's not a long line of people.
So you need a, or an additional user, where, where located, whereabouts would the?
Well, he, well, Mr. Green just did a bunch of work on the diner.
Oh, he's doing it?
Yes, and I believe that's gonna reopen soon, but I'm not sure even just the diner, without looking at their historical usage, if that's large enough to say.
Right, but if that, and if he puts up something else that would use it, the two of them together may trigger it.
If I remember his site plan, I think whatever he had designed would wipe out everything that's currently on the property, it's not to work contingent with what's there.
Okay.
Unless you put in a new, a restaurant there.
But again, I'm, I'm going off the memory, but my understanding is whatever is on that property gets pretty much wiped out, and he's putting a big building with a parking lot and everything else to move forward in a completely new direction.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
So the Route 20 water line is not active now?
So there is, there is a portion, unfortunate, so, I guess it's hard to point out.
Yeah.
Need a pointer.
So, I didn't bring my laser, so Route 20, say you come up Route 169, take a left and head west on Route 20, that is all active.
Sure.
Cause that heads out to the MTA, it heads out to Treehouse, it heads out to the, uh, the MT, the Mass Pike, the police station, and also the Up &amp; Farm condo complex all the way down the end where Sims used to be. There was an extension that was done there, that's all active. Now, unfortunately, that portion between 169 and Stafford Street is not, but from Stafford Street up to North Side Road is active. That's, that's the green line that you see on Route 20.
Okay.
And then heading east from North Side Road on Route 20 all the way out to Oxford is not active.
Is that line actually in the road?
Yes, it's in Route 20.
Oh, it is? Kurt Meskis was explaining to me today about, I guess it's on a different watershed, um, so that, that plays part of the problem, where you have to get?
Yeah, it's played part of the problem with trying to get water supplied from Oxford and supply our entire town, because we're divided between the French and the Quinabog River watershed. So they didn't want, so, the town of Oxford is in the French, and for us to take water from Oxford and bring it to the western portion of our town, so the, the line for the watershed pretty much runs down like North Side Road and straight south. So for any water that we would have had to supply west of, say, North Side Road, the, um, that was DCR or DEM back then, said that it was, it was a significant amount, they would not allow an inter-basin transfer allowance to take water from the French River Basin and pu- and discharge it into the Quinabog River Basin. Now, if we have our own in-town water source, then that goes away because it's within our town.
Oh, so that's?
Now, the town of Southbridge that we're getting water from has an inter-basin transfer permit up to, say, Ohio, I think it's 100,000 gallons per day, where we can take from the Quinabog and supply water to the French River Basin.
Are they already using that 100,000?
Uh, probably not.
No?
No. No, not at this time, I think our total water supply usage from Southbridge averages 105,000 gallons per day, and that's throughout all the active water lines, so, no, at this time, I don't even think we're close to using that.
So, what's it gonna take to get water up the rest of Route 20 and?
Usage.
Just usage, so if we can get something coming?
The water line is there, unfortunately, it's a 12-inch water line, so you're looking at approximately, if it's eight gallons per foot of water, of water storage in that 12-inch line, it might be more than that.
So a lot of usage to move it?
It's, it's a lot of storage, unfortunately, yes, so you need a lot of usage to keep that water fresh.
We need a grocery store to come in, we need our NBC to stop moving.
Sprinkler systems don't count, cause the water has to actually flow.
It's not used.
Cause it's stagnant water in the sprinkler system, yeah, okay.
We've got a couple of restaurants with, with plans before the board, um, I mean, there's the Quarter Keg Transfer Happen, that's not in front of the board right now, but that's potential need of that, and, and then the other restaurant that was going in, uh, the western portion of the town. Now, they have water, I assume?
Who?
That's the, I, I don't know that the plan, I know, just, just west of 169, there's a change on?
Oh, the one that's?
It's kind of installed, that stalled right now?
Yeah, I, you, the water line comes down 169 and then turns left on 20, correct?
So they can, they can tap in? Is that the old Alston building?
Yeah.
There's water available.
But as far as Quarter Keg, they have to draw from Oxford. In the town of Oxford, we don't necessarily connect to their infrastructure at this time, so they can't draw from Oxford.
I almost wanted to say it, cause it's so ironic.
So they won't have water?
Quarter Keg.
Quarter Keg.
Not from us.
Don't know, okay.
Well?
What about the consecutive water systems you were saying?
So the consecutive water system, again, would be us operating the system, so we would do the billing.
From Southbridge?
From Southbridge. So right now, we installed a pump station at the old Sterns' property, Route 169, we would take over distribution of the water theoretically from that pump station, there'd be a meter there, Southbridge would be responsible for delivering water to that point, and then we'd be responsible from there out to the rest of the system.
What's the likelihood of that happening, if it was a two-foot retail? The town taking?
65%, 70%. We're getting closer. Greater than 50, 50.
That's good.
What's going on with the wells up in Townsville?
Down at Buffenville? We're? Down at Buffenville, we're still doing exploration down there. We've acquired two parcels of property. One twenty acre parcel where the wells will be sited, that's landlocked. And we're able to acquire another eight acre parcel that has frontage on Gil Road to give us our own access where we don't have to, we don't need access through the Army Corps of Engineers property. So we, again, we've acquired both those properties at this point. The landlocked parcel where the wells will be sited, we received a fifty percent grant from the, from the state, a reimbursement grant, so I'm working through the process of that to get that reimbursement done. We've also received another two hundred thousand dollar round of funding to do further exploration. So we've done, we've drilled, I guess, five possible public water supply wells. And the thought is to develop those five wells and get approximately forty gallons per minute from each well. So rather than doing one large water supply well that gives you two hundred thousand gallons per day, we're going to do five smaller ones because of the shape, because of the, I guess, what we found for the design of the aquifer in order to safe, get a safe yield. So we're hopefully going to be able to get two hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per day from there to start. It's not enough for our entire system, but it's a good start for us to become self-sufficient. And then from there, we can try and develop other areas of town as other public water supply wells as we kind of grow and move forward.
Be good to have a water department to handle it.
Yeah, it would be nice to have everything in town.
The transition with taking over for Southbridge and then when this comes on, it'll be a good.
So as, as part of that, our next step of that two hundred thousand dollar funding we got from the state, from the grant, is going to be to do some site development, come in front of you for a site plan. The elevation of that property is, it's very intriguing. There's big dips and there's, there's highs, big highs and there's big lows. And the tough thing about developing down by Buffenville is the Army Corps of Engineers has their flood inundation zone and we can't do anything below, I think it was elevation, say, seven twenty-nine or seven thirty-nine. But the parcel where we drill the wells is probably forty feet above that level and it's just a huge hill and it's all gravel. And then there's a huge dip that you have to traverse to get to it to get back out to the road. So as we looked at it and we're looking at drilling five wells, the cost to drill a well is per foot. So if we can take and, let's say, shave twenty feet off of that hill, where we're going to develop the wells because we have to clear it anyways for access and use that gravel to fill where we have to traverse and then maybe have some extra material, then all of a sudden, we get, we get to drill five wells for the price of four because of that savings. Because we have to drill about a hundred and ten feet for each well to get to the water level, to the gravel pack area of where we can actually draw water. So that's the next step. So our, our next step to develop that site and working with the state and working with the Army Corps is get that site plan moving forward, making sure there's no MEPA study that's going to sneak up on us or any other steps that are going to, going to trip us up. And also design access, how we're going to get from that site out back up to, say, Oxford Road and head up to the schools where the new infrastructure that ExxonMobil installed is. So we're still kind of, again, we've, we've probably spent about three hundred thousand dollars so far from two rounds of grant funding from the state, so. We're moving forward. It's a slow process, but trying to keep everybody involved as we do it, so. You know, DEP, the Army Corps of Engineers, and all the divisions of the state and everything else to make sure that we don't get so far, spend so much money and then someone comes up from left field and says, hey, you, you forgot about doing this part, so.
That's a process.
Yeah, so that's where we're at with that. We're still, luckily, we're still moving forward.
Working with a consultant that is kind of guiding you a little bit.
We're using, yeah. Beta Engineering came on board before me back in, say, two thousand seventeen. So we've been working with them consistently and they brought on a water engineering consultant to take us through the drilling process and evaluate that data and make recommendations, so. Between the two of them, that's where I'm working fairly well.
We need water, so perfect.
So again, there is water, right, in, in most portions of Route 20.
Huge, you know, the last ten years, what we've been on.
But sewer. We haven't changed sewer infrastructure since, I guess, Phase Two construction was done in two thousand two or three. So what you see has been pretty consistent from then. What we have been doing over the past couple of years is evaluating the operations of the sewer plant and trying to make, I guess, upgrades and changes so that we can become more efficient and treat what we're getting for waste, I guess, more economically. So we, we have two rest areas on the Mass Pike that go into our collection system. And the strength of the waste that we get from them in regards to ammonia is very, very high and can wreak, can create some problems during, for our treatment process, especially when the Mass Pike is very busy on a holiday weekend. And unfortunately, with our NIPD's permit, we have to sample one Monday a month. And if it's on a holiday, if a holiday falls on the Monday, we have to sample that holiday. So it kind of sets us up for disaster, but we've been, again, we've made some upgrade. We haven't made necessarily upgrades, but we've made some improvements. We're trying to make sure that everything that we do have for equipment is operated correctly and efficiently so that we can handle what, what we're getting. And we've also been working with the brewery as well. And they're currently in the process of installing their own pretreatment system to knock down their levels of waste so that we don't see the strength coming from them. Which when they, which when they negotiated their connection in the beginning was always their intention, so. That's a process that's moving forward and sewer's a little more straightforward, I guess, because you, we don't, we haven't been doing the extensions. We probably have twelve to twenty new connections a year between residential and commercial, so it's not really growing. We are still under a moratorium for new connections for properties who haven't paid betterments just because we want to make sure that if the people who did pay betterments wanted to connect, there's capacity there for them. But that doesn't mean that it's an automatic no for a new, for a new connection. New connections will be considered and allowed. Just anything over ten thousand gallons per day needs approval from the board. So again, we're, we're looking at the Phase Two that was extended in two thousand two. Those betterments are coming, there was a twenty year betterment term that's coming to end of life probably in two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three. And sooner or later, I think the commission's looking and saying, look, if you haven't connected in the last twenty years, we can't save reserve capacity for you forever. So either connect now and try and give them, say, a one or two year window to say, if you're not connected by two thousand twenty-three, what's available for excess capacity is going to be sold to first come, first served.
Is the current system anywhere near capacity or is there available?
As far as flow goes, the permit, the plant is permitted for four hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. We average, say, two hundred to two hundred and twenty, depending on, on weather and usage. But because of the strength of the waste between the MTA and the brewery, it's not like we have two hundred thousand gallons per day of residential waste coming in.
Right, right.
So that's kind of the tricky part. So even though we're at two hundred thousand gallons per day, the ability to treat that two hundred thousand gallons per day is like treating three fifty.
Yeah.
But with, with the brewery starting their pretreatment process, should knock down their strength of waste, knock it down by, say, eighty percent. So that'll kind of free some stuff up, especially with the improvements we've been able to do to kind of catch our breath and say, okay, we can reassess what's going on, know what we're getting for ammonia levels from the service areas and reevaluate where we're at to feel comfortable with moving forward.
I guess there's no chance of the service areas putting in pretreatment? Probably not, voluntarily.
The only way for them to do that is if their cost that we charge them to treat is more than their cost to install a pretreatment system. And my understanding is the state leases the property to one company and that company pays the bills and that lease is up in five years. So then that, that company's not going to spend one point two million dollars when they have six years left on a twenty year lease.
Sure, right.
In six years, when that next company signs that twenty year lease, if we can get, if we can speak with them on year one and say, look, if you spend one point two million, you're going to save two million over twenty years, then we might be able to get something done.
Right.
But until that happens, I don't see that.
Yes, that's not going to happen, yeah.
But again, once that lease renews, I, I think there'll be a short window where we could have some good conversations with that new LSE and let them know where they're at and what we're looking at, show them historic data and get them to consider making that investment, which helps everybody.
Right.
Any other questions?
Great, thanks guys.
Good seeing everybody.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing for Zero Point Development. We're going to keep it pretty short. I know a lot of the letters didn't, couldn't show up today, so.
Everybody signed in for Zero Point?
That's for August for Zero.
So I'm going to let me kind of.
Well, since our last meeting, there's, there are a couple of things that have happened. We did request Braves Engineering to go to the property, which they did today, and we received reports at quarter three this afternoon. They basically pointed out what has been done on the property, which we're all aware of. Full parcels, we report on each one, but, and. But photographs of it as of this day, the August for Zero, they brought up another item that is, is an engineering item for drainage pipes on the property. That's another issue, you know, but that's minor. That doesn't really have anything to do with the applications that we're. Also, at the last meeting, I had been requested to ask Kurt Meskis, the Building Commission, to issue a cease and, cease and desist order, which I did do. He has not issued one at this time and I received this report again around four PM today. Which, there are two letters that are dated January twenty-second. The one that is by itself, I actually received yesterday, the one is part of a package I actually received today. Which is basically stating in there that he's waiting for the determination by the planning board before he determines if he's issuing a cease and desist order or not. So that wasn't what the planning board requested, but that's what his statement is at this time.
I believe the planning board actually voted on a cease and desist last week.
To have one issue and it has not been done at this time. As a result of just receiving this information so late in the day today, it's a lot of information to take in. They haven't really had a chance to thoroughly review it. It's really hard to discuss on the information today when you just received it. You'll also see there's a package where there were emails back and forth with the, a couple of concerned voters that I was receiving the email as well as Mr. Meskis was receiving the emails. He's replied to those emails, which is all, all that information is in this package.
I mean, I, we don't really want to go into this without all being, having read the information for discussion. It, it, it doesn't, no one wants to say the wrong thing with, with the information.
I mean, I received this late this afternoon and I haven't really had a chance to thoroughly go through it. I mean, I have read the emails and everything, but all the information was provided to me today. I haven't, I literally got it late in the day and didn't have a chance to go through it thoroughly. So it's hard to speak on it when we just received the information.
And the idea that, I know Kurt and Dennis couldn't be here, they have something going on.
Yes, actually.
Another commitment.
They, they both had firefighting training tonight. Kurt has said that he will be here at our February fifth meeting. I haven't heard from Dennis yet. Dennis Carlton, the bar inspector, that if he will attend our February fifth meeting, I'm hoping he will. He and Kurt are both attending the same training, so they will be here at our February fifth meeting so that we can probably further discuss this and prove these even if they're available.
We also are working with the Board of Selectmen to kind of figure out the, whatever miscommunication that actually happened. And it makes sense to kind of get through their piece of this before we make any decisions on our side also. Do we have any questions or anything?
There's, there's one more item. This is another part of the, it actually has to do with both applications, but there was discussion on the bonding of decommissioned bonds on the batteries themselves. Lori Deignan, who is now here in the audience, has done a lot of research and she's been in communication with me with some of the information she's found. She actually was able to acquire some information, which, did I, did you get the, did you get the cover letter from Battery Solutions?
No.
Pass that around? You have that?
No.
Okay, well, actually, I, she sent this to me today. I apologize if I continued it out. But basically, she was able to get a SDF sheet from the town of Sterling. And this information was based on that, which is supposed to be a similar battery style of what's being proposed in these batteries here in Charlton. Based on the information was provided and it's give or take because they need a few more details to actually determine it. But this quote from Battery Solutions here, I'll pass it around for all of the workers to see. And they have made a quote of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and that is just a general quote on the basic information we have.
To just decommission one trailer?
One, one battery. The, the, the other part of that issue is that, is the company's in Michigan.
So it's transport, so it's going to be transportation also.
So there's trucking costs involved.
Can you correct me that there is, there's only two recyclers in the country or there's very few recyclers that actually look at these?
There's very few recyclers for lithium ion batteries, yes. Particularly when it's a, of this type of capacity.
Lori, you can chime in anytime. You're, you're an honorary member, no. Just because, I mean, you should be the line up for.
Yeah, right now, even the ones I've reached out to haven't been quick to respond. Battery Solutions did respond. And hopefully, as the need becomes greater, there'll be more and more recyclers. So that amount, I imagine, will go down. But they did warn me that as batteries become more affordable, just the same thing that happened with the panels, is you have batteries that are cheaper, thus they don't last as long. And she said they actually cost more to recycle because there's less of the more pricier items in it that, that they like to recycle, same as the solar panels. So hopefully, it'll be closer because somebody will handle it closer to, to Massachusetts. But right now, it looks like trucking would be about two thousand dollars because it's a hazmat. You need a driver that's also certified to drive because they do get hot. So, but it was nice. They, and, and like I've said before, it's something that we can use for now. Just like the bonds for solar panels, they'll be readdressed every so many years. Due to inflation, recycling may get cheaper.
And so the board knows, we, some of us were there. We went in front of the Board of Selectmen to kind of get some maybe guidance, advice, asked for permission to talk to council if necessary, to see with a lot of our pre-binding with the, the facilities that we have in, we were probably underestimating with these, with our, with our, with the bonds that we got. And John McGrath actually said, she'd fix it. He said, when they come in to do their, you know, to do the updating, just, you can, you can, you can actually just fix the amount of bonds. Obviously, we'll talk to council on how we can do that, but as new applicants come in and more and more will want to put, will want to put batteries in, we can kind of fix our past mistakes by, by making up for with the new bond. And if you want the battery, now you, you do the bond for the whole thing. in the amount that is closer to what reality is.
Yeah, a lot of, for people that might not have been here, a lot of the bonds do not have any disposal or recycling cost for the panels. They just had strictly recycling. And recycling doesn't mean it's free. With the modules, there is a cost because of the cadmium and whatever they decide to put in them.
We trusted all of the solar companies that come up with estimates, and we had an engineer that is, that really wasn't familiar with solar. I mean, it's actually pretty, pretty new, so we kind of just.
Every town did though. Everyone I've spoken to, the other towns have done the same thing. So, it's a time to not stick it to solar because it's just an insurance policy for if, with the people that lease their land, you have new people buying out that lease. You need a new bond. So it protects the landowner, the private landowner, when, if the solar company goes belly up and you're all left to dispose of the panels. So it, and it also protects the town, so if we have to go in there and clean up, we're covered with some kind of a line of credit at the bank or a cash ahead. That way, if we have to go to an attorney to go get to the insurance bond, we're covered.
That's the issue, right?
Yeah, it's not to stick it to anyone. It's really, as things progress, new technology comes along, a lot of people are just setting the panels aside. Batteries get replaced. They need to go in special containers because lithium ion in that quantity gets so hot. So we have to protect ourselves with the containers that can handle it. So, and again, with the batteries being added to the private landowners, we want to make sure they have a current material safety data sheet, so they know what's sitting in their yard. And if they have more batteries, then they should be getting higher rate for leasing the property. So it's a chance for the private landowner to get more money because you are taking greater risk. So, it's really to help everyone, and I think the planning board in general, we've always said we're not against solar. We just want to protect everyone in town, so.
I assume we have a spreadsheet of all the current bonds that we have on all the current fields? So we've got that listed, so we can look at that as they, see what we can do to adjust these. So, through the chair, we've got two sites that we're really looking at tonight. We've got Osgood and we've got Colburn. It seems to me that from reading Kurt's and the chief's information here, that the sightings of Osgood kind of meet our requirements now. They're 100 feet from the borders. Pads are sufficient.
The only question that's come up with Osgood, which, I mean, it appears that it's okay with the conservation commission reviewing the location of one of the batteries. It's one, for lack of better terms, in the rear of the property. Is a wetlands and a wetlands buffer there, but it, I mean, on face out, it appears that it's, but it was part of their approval. They're having their next meeting on February 5th, so. I would think that we should just get an answer from them, that they're comfortable with the location of that battery. It appears that it's okay, but still, it's within their purview to determine that, so.
I agree. I don't think we should approve anything tonight without him.
Right, so, but other than that, that, that particular site doesn't have any other issues that I'm aware of. It does meet the requirements that were set in the March 26th letter from the fire department, meaning all the requirements, the parameters they set in that letter, so.
Okay, so assuming Khan Khan is okay with, with the sighting, and all we're really looking at is what the appropriate bond is for.
Correct, yes.
Can I interrupt on that one? I believe the original site plan, Ernie said the two batteries were gonna be near the equipment at the top of the hill at the beginning of the solar field, so. Now, is it on a plan that conservation?
They still need to come, come ahead with their.
They have a new plan, which the bat, there's one at the top of the hill at the entrance, but there's also another one further back into the property where the, for lack of better term, the second solar field is.
Yeah.
That's the one that is, there's, there's wetlands in that area, so it's been given to them to review just to make sure that they're okay with the location of that battery.
And I know that.
They won't be side by side, they're gonna be separated.
In some of the emails that I've been getting from, have you guys all been copied on some of the butter emails too? Kind of get blind copied on them? So.
I saw a few in here.
I, I think we were on all of the, all the emails. It seems like they, they went through the whole entire town hall.
A butter's for Osgood, or?
There hasn't been any, I haven't received an email from any of the others of Osgood for sure.
Three different, I think three different emails. I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that I.
I'm trying to keep these two separate because these are really two site plans, so I don't want to loop.
Which one is the one that is, the complaint is where the, there used to be a stream and whatever was done.
That's the other replication on Colburn Road.
So there used to be a stream, and then they did something to the stream, and now the stream is kind of a pond.
At Colburn?
Yeah, we probably closed one and opened the other, so we can discuss that one.
Yep, so let's, so, for Osgood, so we're gonna wait until the top did.
We're gonna just extend, we're just gonna have the February 5th meeting.
But we've looked at the numbers, you know, we don't make a decision tonight, but we can discuss, you know, the recycling fees and what we would, would probably suggest for a bond.
I would, I would rather just wait for us to kind of get through our, our issue with the Board of Selectmen and this zoning enforcement officer. There's some miscommunications. I want all that to be discussed and be brought out with the Board of Selectmen before we go ahead and do anything. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned that the planning board should have ceased and desist. To be, I mean, I'm, I'm the, you know, I'm a straight shooter here. I, I get called out for it all the time. We should have ceased and desist. Our applicant decided to throw in some batteries. Not little that, like these giant trailer truck, they brought like a, like a crane through and dropped a giant battery and ripped through an butter's property over the easement and did all sorts of things. We went to the Board of Selectmen and said, "Hey, help us." The Board of Selectmen said, "Planning board, it's all up to you. Good luck, come back to us at, at some point." And I don't, I don't, I think we just need to not do anything until the Board of Selectmen decide on whether they should like tighten their reins a little bit on their zoning enforcement officer. The planning board can't issue cease and desist, and we can't do anything. Anything we do, anything we approve, we have to be, our applicants can do anything they want, and we can't really, we don't really have any consequences. I, I'm extremely concerned about that as the chair. I don't know if anybody else is concerned at this, but it's, it's really an issue that.
It's not the applicant's fault though, because he, they were told they could do it.
At their risk.
But the, but, there was clearly, there was clearly a meeting.
There was a representative of the town telling them.
Right. Well, we had, we had a meeting, and everybody, we had a clear meeting. We have, I went back and watched the meeting multiple times, and the discussion was that.
Come back.
Come back, don't do anything, come back. And then all of a sudden, that got confused with, so the applicant clearly wanted to put them in. We had an official from this town saying, "Proceed at your own risk." It doesn't, I, I, I don't want to do anything. I don't want to decide on this, do anything, approve anything until the Board of Selectmen decide that they, that they're gonna rein in their employee and make him do his job.
Okay, so I, I agree that I don't think we should approve or, or, you know, make any decisions.
And I honestly don't want to discuss all the butters here. I'm, I'm the one, when the but, the butters called me, I'm the one that said, "We won't be having much of a discussion because I'm not doing any, I don't." Because you, they had other things. I said, "Don't show up, we're not gonna make any decisions, we're not gonna really do much because we're still waiting to figure out what's gonna happen with this." It was actually kind of, kind of horrible.
My main concern is that while we're waiting, what are the things that are being done in the field?
Right, yeah, what else is happening?
Since there is no cease and desist order, are they continuing? Are they going ahead? Are they proceeding when I feel they shouldn't be? Because they have not come to us with new site plan designs showing everything that's there. The site plans we have are inaccurate.
Yeah, it's not like they just came in and dropped them waiting to install and lay them.
Right.
They're down to the cement pads, you know, they're currently installed in there.
And since no cease and desist has been issued, we have no control over what's happening out there. We don't know.
That's right.
And we don't have the resources to have somebody out there every day to watch them.
Yeah, but we do kind of hold the trump card where the, to make sure they do comply, they can't connect because you have to sign off on, Mike has to go and do an inspection, set up there, everything is done perfectly.
Right, they can't connect, but they, what else are they gonna bring in?
They can proceed, and they can go back and fix it after the fact.
So that's a reward for doing what you're not, what you're told not to do.
You're gonna ask for forgiveness in this.
We, we can't, we can't set a precedent on this board where it's easier to ask for forgiveness and permission. We cannot set that. And we definitely can't have our, our zoning enforcement officer work with our applicants to do that, to make it simpler. So now, the discussion will have to be had. Do we say, "You know what? The battery doesn't meet requirements, move it. Pick it up, bring your crane in, you already did once, and move your battery. It's gonna be very expensive, but do it." And then now we're gonna have a lawsuit because our zoning enforcement officer decided that it's okay. I'm pretty, it's, 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 it's pretty bad, so I don't, I think we should end this discussion. And we should wait until the Board of Selectmen decide on how they want to handle it, and then we'll go ahead and we'll talk a little bit.
I'd still like to talk a little bit more generally, not, not site specific, but generally on what we want to do for bonds. You've got some numbers. We can start talking a little bit about what we want to do going forward. And I think we've got all the information we need to do that, not site, site specific.
Okay, I know, I agree with you.
So that's, that's, that's kind of what, we've got some business that we can do. I'd hate to put it off just because we're not, we're not talking those sites. So I mean, we've, we've looked at the numbers of what it takes to recycle. It was what?
Hundred twenty-five per trailer.
Twenty-five plus 2,000. I think we need to look at those numbers and paddle a little bit because we don't know what the future's gonna hold. We don't know what, what, what the, what's gonna be there. I'm not saying a lot, but I think we need to look at a number probably closer to 200 per battery back to.
I absolutely agree. Deb Chigurhini during the Board of Selectmen meeting actually said, "There's a better, there's a better option than cash." Remind me, she said, "Insurance bond?"
It's a, a line of credit with an FDIC-approved bank.
Because the town would get notified as soon as they didn't pay. It wouldn't be like, oh, it wasn't paid for a long time, and all of a sudden, we go back.
And that would have to be up every year. That would have to be, you know, once a year, so that's.
And will you talk to Deb about what she's suggesting and see if there's anything else?
Well, actually, I'm dealing with another solar provider who, they're trying to get a decommissioning bond, and insane position, like, what's the different methods of, and they just sent a two-year settlement. Today's been a crazy day. I haven't been able to go over, but it's basically signing a contract that, that they, because I, you know, the concern is renewing it every year, will they actually do it? And they're actually going to sign a contract, say, that they're renewing it every year. So I want to take that to Deb and have her look at it, see if it's something that she feels that would work for the town because I guess that's the way they work their renewal every year. But the question is, what if they don't do it? And so.
What if they get sold or?
Yeah, so we need some sort of. What if they get sold and we don't know who it is? How, how can we collect?
She was saying it's gonna take months to find out.
Well, like, it's just like our car insurance. If you don't pay the premium, it gets canceled. So, we have 30 of these in town. We've got to come up with a way where the burden isn't on the staff, follow these 30. So, I think with the standby letter of credit or with a bank, they're, they will say that if this company doesn't do what they promised to do, then we will pay for it. So that the money is there. So they have to have a good credit line. A lot of these solar companies are new, I think.
Zero Point, you started in 2015, so, you know, so whether the banks feel that they're a viable company and will give them a line of credit, that's one issue. So I think if we ask for a certain amount of money upfront, like Westbrook Field is getting a hundred thousand dollars cash per megawatt in an account.
Per megawatt?
Per megawatt. And that's because they don't even want to deal with who's buying the land and the lease is being sold. And most of ours are leases, so. I was asking Deb at the meeting last week, is there a way that we can have a small savings account that follows the parcel? So if Mr. Stevens, another company comes in and leases from him, he's covered. He doesn't have to worry that, oh, there's a new lease person on my land, have they done what they're supposed to? This cash in the bank will follow them, and that will get us at least the ability to hire counsel and not have that fall on anyone.
Yeah, because it does appear that.
Yeah.
Facilities are selling almost as soon as they're running.
Absolutely, and the last thing we need is to have our landowners. We don't protect our landowners too. I mean, we have landowners, and, and, and hopefully they have, you know, really great attorneys that are protecting them, but all of a sudden, they have this big piece of property with all of these solar panels and all these used batteries. And they're going, wow, my lands were at this, but it's gonna cost me hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean it up, and they're stuck, and you have lawyers and.
Because you have, people like Zero Point and that work with Pro-Tech Energy or Infinity Energy, and they're the construction company, and then you have this other firm in Arizona or somewhere. So the minute the, the field is, is built, then they can sell the credit, the energy credits, if I'm correct, and then be the landlord. And there's other companies that just go around buying up leases, so. I don't know. And that's, this is what I said last meeting, other towns are doing exactly what we're doing. Because there's not a whole lot of help out there for us. The solar industries have their lobbyists and their attorneys looking out for them, but we really need to look ahead. So, asking for cash upfront is not unusual, and the AG's office approved it.
So we already have our solar farms and our bonds issued, and they, and depending on how it was written in the conditions, like there might just only, is there a true reassessment, or is it just a percentage? That's, that's the issue. So maybe using, looking at the batteries, we, we, we look at it and we say, all right, you want to put a battery, we're gonna reassess your whole entire. And if you want a battery, we're gonna, we're gonna buy, we're gonna feed a hundred thousand cash in a, in account.
Yeah.
And then the bond for the battery, whatever, that might be the way to kind of rectify the situation.
And the line of credit, because there is big money behind it. I mean, I'm not picking on one company, but then again, it also protects the landowner with leases. This is what we need to do, because I think they're in the same boat. They should, their lease, your rent should go up. You're getting more value for them, your rent needs to go up, and they can, there's, the, the D O E R has the monetary incentives right now, so that's why the big push.
And what, is the landowner at risk through all of this?
That's one thing I, I would hope that they checked with their homeowner's insurance. It is on their parcel. Maybe the, the solar leasing has insurance? I don't know. There's a lot of unknowns.
But would the town ever go back to the, to the landowner to look for?
Actually, they, that's why Deb told me that on the private landowners that lease, they didn't need to see the bond because they're, and some actually were built without any bond. Their argument was, we could put a lien on the property. But as we know, what good is lien on a piece of back acreage with hazardous products on it that need to go be handled specially? So that the property, if, if, God forbid that happens, or technology changes that drastically that anybody will walk, which I hope that it just changes with the industry, it's not gonna cover anyone, and we're gonna have a lot of super fun sites sitting around with decaying. Out west, it happens with the wind. All windmills are sitting. Recycling them costs more to drive from California to the one or two that handle it, so.
Has the applicant received these reports from Graves? I know they came in at 4:30.
No.
Excuse me, I don't mean to insult you, I'm, I'm just furious that all this kind of happened, and now I have a butters calling me and emailing me really, really upset, so.
We have a meeting. And all due respect, we have a meeting. We have a public meeting, they can be here tonight. That's what the meeting is for. We're here tonight, it's our application, and all due respect, and I know it's your board, but it's our application. Love to be able to discuss this with you. Love to be able to go over with you. I know you're furious, hopefully we can turn the heat down. Hopefully tell you where we got here, tell you what happened. This didn't happen in a vacuum. They didn't wave a wand and they showed up. There was all kinds of. They didn't wave a wand and they showed up. There was all kinds of communications. And all, we, we're hearing conversations in the public as to what the bond is. Just give a, uh, give a quote for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a piece. Why did you ask for a million and a half? I don't know where the value, where, where that comes from. We had our, our estimate. We gave it to the, we gave it to the town. Peer review approved it. Absolutely happy to discuss this. Make you remember, this is a site plan application. It's an amendment to the site plan. This is a priority, not exempt, but a priority use. All right, even batteries, a priority use under the statute.
Batteries are never
Yeah, batteries are not on the approved site plan.
No, no, they're not. They're on our application, but it's still site plan. Hold on. This applicant, we're here tonight on an application.
Revision.
I know. We're here tonight on that issue. So this is
But they're already there.
It's not exactly in a vacuum again. We, we, what we came to this town, we discussed it as a possible field change. This is a component.
A possible
Hold on.
Excuse me. We, there was a meeting on April
Third.
Third, and I watched it twice, and it, it, everybody in the room, multiple times the questions were asked, that nothing would go in until there was a modification of the site, site plan, and we just didn't get that modification.
They were talking about batteries at that meeting.
They were, absolutely. They were. They talked about this as a component change of this. There was emails that went back, with not only with uh, the building inspector, but also with town planner at the time. They said this was
No, 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 no.
Meet with you, satisfy the, and listen, I, I understand that where we were there and where we are here right now, a lot of things had happened. So what I'm, what my hope was, regardless of what happened, we're here now on an amended site plan. These batteries are not fired up. They're on site, but they're not fired up. So we're asking this board for an amendment to the site plan. Bear in mind, again, it's site plan. It's still, this is an allowed use. The board's role on site plan is to, you have to allow it unless there are no conditions that you can impose. Though, that's what site plan is.
Did you present new plans to us with the batteries showing on them?
Right now, that's what we're here on. That's what we're submitting.
We're, there wasn't
Our, our, we were here our last meeting, it was our first public hearing for the application for the site mod.
There wasn't one discussion about not allowing batteries. The discussion was site plan modification. Um, and we have guidelines, we have, we have zoning bylaws that have been passed with batteries. We have
Those, those don't apply. We already had town council opinion on that. They don't apply. This is a site plan modification. We follow in the site plan. And the site, it's a priority use. This is exempt.
We're in our zoning at all.
Can we have that documentation from town council?
Mark Bobrowski said that this was a site plan modification.
Site plan modification, not, so it's not the new bylaws. We're under the old bylaws.
So I have a question. So I, I'm just, I, I've been on the board for a lot of years, so normally what happens is before you actually make the modification, you usually come first to us with the modification. We discuss it, we, you know, we, we do our thing, we, we have our peer review, and then we approve it, and then it gets done. But the problem is, it somehow got done before we actually had a hear, a, a public hearing to do the modification. So I get, I get it's an allowed use. I get the whole lawyer talk. I get all that. We understand that it's allowed. We, we, we have no issues. Our issue is that somehow um, your client decided that one day they were gonna put up a battery, even though it was very clear to everybody, everybody who watched the meetings, the app, everybody, that you needed to come to us. And if, if you came to us and we would have looked at it, done our little bond thing, approved it, and you, everybody would be good. But now we're here having, you know, dealing with our, 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 our internal issues and our external issues. So don't come to me and tell me that you're here and we need to discuss it. I, as the board here, we, we need to get our, we need to get all the facts together to be able to discuss this site plan modification.
One of the things that also happened at the April third, two thousand nineteen meal, meeting, the fire department developed parameters. Specifically in this case, the hundred-foot setback from the property line. The planning board voted to adopt those parameters to any site plan modifications for E S S energy storage systems at that meeting.
Actually, the parameters, in all due respect, the parameters weren't a hundred feet from the property line. It's a hundred feet to the property line if building can occur at the property line. So if it could be built, that's what the perimeter was. I saw the guidelines.
Well, I'd just like to clarify. So at, at that meeting, it was, it was agreed and approved on to, to be guidelines as a condition of energy storage systems. It's not, it's not a, a strict bylaw recommendation or standard in your bylaws. It's, you guys approved it as a condition that the board can make conditions on energy storage systems. So it's not, it's not a
Would you have part of a site plan?
So at that April, so just to clarify, in, in, at that April meeting, this is, this is the progression of how the, the, the project got from in April till now. In that meeting, I, I do disagree with you that it was, uh, clear night and day that it was a, you were always supposed to come back for a site plan amendment, because at that time, it was a field change. And, 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 and in that meeting, I believe
Do you wanna play the video right now?
Sure, sure, sure. I can even, I can even, I can even give you a timestamp of where you said, Madam Chair, uh, we, we don't need to come back for the site plan amendment. We've already seen the plan. I can give you that exact timestamp.
At, at that, at that meeting, Jean Vincent, this person asked Kurt Maskis
Yes, I did.
directly, will this be a site plan modification? His answer was
It was a field change. It was a field change.
And I said, what is the site plan modification?
No, a field change.
It was definitely a site plan mod, and I
That was, that was the exact word.
The council agreed it's a site plan modification. So that, so that, so that, so that site plan modification came Let me just
I don't mean to yell, I'm just, I'm just
No, I do need you. I'm sorry. I get hot, and I know you do. That's fine.
George, let me, let me just clarify. So, George, let me just clarify the timeline. So in April, it was a field change to the site plan.
It was never a field change.
So then, so then we, we had reached out at the time. It was Bill Scanlon as the planning, as the planning director at the time. We have an email from him confirming that it was a field, field modification, assuming that you worked with the planning, uh, the building inspector and fire chief for the modification.
Site plan modification.
The site plan modification came after, from April to October, we were working with the fire chief and building inspector to work with, uh, getting the documentation that they wanted. We came back in October in front of the planning board to, to discuss the procedure moving forward. We said, we're ready to update the board on this. At the time, Randy Benson had said, well, no, this is a special permit. So in that October meeting, we continued till November, and in November, that is when you guys had reached out to town council. Town council at that point in November confirmed, this is not a special permit, it's not a field change, it is a site plan amendment. So in November, from, from November till January now, we submitted a full site plan amendment to the application.
So you decided to bring batteries in though? So all this hap, there wasn't, um, so, so one day you decided, we're gonna work with our, our, our building commissioner, and then all of a sudden
In, in, in fire captain.
So that, that was, that was based off of the April meeting where it was a field change based on the approval of
I think right now is a good idea to bring in our crane and drop our batteries without getting pre-approval, knowing that the, knowing that you have to do a site plan modification. I don't wanna argue
So that site plan modification was
Actually, can we, let's, let's continue this, um, I, or let's have some meaningful, I don't, I don't wanna be bandering. We don't wanna stay here all night. Um, can we, do we have discussion regarding?
So we've got a, we've got a modification of the site.
Right, and we will, I
We agree with that. We agree with that.
Did we have approved it?
We have a lot of, we have a Graves review, we have multiple letters that we all need to go back. We, we, none of us are prepared and have all this knowledge. I mean, you could have scanned it to be able to have a, a good discussion over the process. Um, I am I, I, I think we may need to kind of reach out to council to have a, a part of this, a discussion on this maybe. Um, so I'm not ready to kind of move on any further. I would, I would prefer to continue this to the next hearing when we all have had a chance to kind of digest all of the the facts in front of us and figure out, um, even with the, with the battery estimate, that just kind of came in today.
Yep.
Would like to see that too, if I can, yeah.
Absolutely. I know that they could, they could be more precise with, um, with actual specs, cause I know the, the batteries are a little bit different.
Yeah.
And
I understand that aspects are, actually, we've submitted the spec sheets. It's probably, you know, it's been, you know, I know the town has it.
Um, one of the things I just Do we have that specific sheet that we, that
I requested it and did not receive it.
It's actually, it is with the town.
So we do have the M D. What is it called again?
Well, an S D S. You have the S D S for the battery with the town?
I think it's with the town.
If it was just added, why would you know back in the spring which battery you were buying to go with the packet?
Cause in April, it was a field change. So from April to October, we've been working with the town to provide all the information that the building inspector and fire chief has been, been asking for.
We give it to the town. We don't give it to everyone. Give it to the town.
You know what? We're, we're all volunteers, and you'll be very surprised at the power of all the central mass towns. You're gonna hear a lot more people just like me.
I understand. I, I mean, I, I, I got it. I, I understand that people have concerns. I'm always happy to deal with that. You guys can protect your rights. You protect your rights. You guys protect your rights. We'll protect that. I hope that we're able, my hope tonight, coming into this, is we're not, we got here in a very bad road, all right? It might have been done with bad advice, bad advice. Town staff, not you folks, maybe got bad advice. My clients got bad advice. I wasn't involved. Town council wasn't involved. We're here. My hope, and this was when I was here in November, I agree with town council, this is the route. Drop your plans, get your pants, put everything together, and we'll get there. And what, however we got here, which is bad, call that history and show them what we want. Because we're actually pretty, you know, encouraged by it. We, we don't think it's a bad, and these things, despite the fact that there may be opposition throughout the town, throughout the, the county, these things are very good. They're very good for the state, they're very good for the grid, they're very good for the, for the American, for, 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 for us. They provide a whole lot of services, not just to make a ton of money for us. They're good for the people, and I know that you might not like it.
We said it last week, batteries, we're not fighting the battery. Now you're, you're misconstruing.
No, 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 I'm not, not misconstruing. I'm just saying that this is, so what my point was, I will get, we got here bad. The road here was very bad. I'm gonna be the first one to admit that. What I'm gonna say to you is that if we can stop fresh, let us present, tell you what we've got, tell you why we've done it, where we are, what the specs are, what these batteries are, what the risks are. And he, you're right, you didn't have the right say in this, all right? Have that say, and I want this board always to feel very comfortable with what they do. I'm never, I, I'm not suggesting for a minute, I'm gonna pull a fast one on you.
Right, let's say the wood will work with you, and we'll get it done, and we'll get to the end of this. We'll, um, there'll be lots of conversations with the butters because if, have you gone and seen the nest up there? Then the, the twenty-foot easement turned into a fifty-foot easement, and the neigh, the, the neighbor's property was kind of ripped apart like crazy.
They should be suing my client.
And then
That's a private
I disagree with that statement, but I just haven't dealt with
So, but hold on, let me just tell you that that's a private remedy. And I, I mean, one of the things is, these property owners should get more rent. Say, we're gonna call upon the planning board to negotiate the rents? That's not your job. And that's, in all due respect, that's not your job. So when you say that these property owners should be getting more rents, that's not your concern.
No, no, no.
That was made during that.
That's what she said. And then said, it's not your concern. Your concern is, your concern is for the town to make sure that this is done. In all fairness, the property owner should be making their deal.
No, the planning of what, the planning of what also helps, helps represent, they, they, they have elected us. We are here to keep them safe. We're here to keep the, the, the town safe. Um, and when one of, um, my developers come in to my board and then kind of rip apart, you know, the
So when a developer doesn't do what they say they're gonna do, and they do
Or they do more than what they said.
We have, we have to stand up for the property.
Yeah, because there are
Now all of a sudden, there's, there's two pads in front of this one's person's house where, where did they come from? Who put them down? Nobody knows. Um
So I, I mean, I, I can answer that. So that was brought up at the last meeting. That, that, so
Right, and I
That pad, that, there was one pad, a large pad shown on the plans in that location. We've been working with, I believe you're referring to the woman who lives at seventy-eight, uh,
I know, we know.
right, right next to the easement. Her name's Michelle. We've worked with her multiple times. We've cut trees down on her property that she's asked for. She was well aware of what, of what was gonna be installed in there. And that, those two pads are actually smaller than the original pad, one pad that was shown on that plan. And that was due to National Grid's recommendation of what they wanna do for their equipment. And you had mentioned that the easement is a little bit larger. I went out there and measured the easement. There's one spot that you can measure, it's, I believe it's like thirty-five feet wide. And I would say that that location is due because there was a bare spot in that, in that area. It wasn't because we over widened the easement. And then that, at that point, we directionally drilled underneath and then popped up on the other side onto closer to her house of that easement. So I, I, I disagree with you when you say we just went in there and widened the, the easement further than we should. I do agree with you that we did cut trees down on the property along that property line, which was addressed back with, during the construction timeframe. We worked with Graves and said we would come back in the spring and plant those trees. That was already addressed back months ago during, during the construction timeframe. So I do agree with you on that point, and I, 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 I question the, the additional widening of the easement because it's not, it's not as what, um, you know, at the last meeting and tonight, you'd said it was fifty, fifty feet wide or eighty feet wide, so.
It's huge.
It's twen, it's twenty feet wide.
It's supposed to be twenty, and it's thirty. Okay, it's ten feet.
We can, we can, it's, the homeowner has to, has to
That's really
But I think the other important part too, that is the location of the battery on Colburn Road.
That doesn't follow these standards.
No, that, the, the The planning board adopted those parameters and the first one they couldn't, did not follow those.
I will suggest to you that there is a, a letter from the fire chief that does say that it conforms as amended. And that, so you'll see in there, and one of the things, I, I know there was a list of documents that you had. I sent a letter to the board. I don't know, but, uh, Randy, did you give that to the, to the board, my letter? With all the attachments?
Which letter is that?
Um, just a few days ago.
We need to be done with this. Let's, let's continue this because we're just, we're, you know, there's more letters. We need to, we need to all be on the same page when we're start, when we're talking about this.
I think the bottom line is, we're gonna have a bunch of these coming in, and if we're not doing it right from the get-go, it's, it's, it really is wrong.
We don't want people to look back at this and say, they did it, we did it.
It's just stating a history still that even if the fire department changed their mind, they never came back to the planning board. The planning board at the October third
It's not the right procedure.
April third, we adopted the parameters you suggested, and then the next day, they turn around and say, oh, you don't have to use our parameters after the planning board adopted the parameters they suggested. The planning board was out of the loop.
You can't just decide, and I don't care whose permission you have in town, to, to do something that is on the planning board's authority without the planning board's authority. You can't, you can't just decide to fix it.
And I, I believe that part is our internal problem here.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, which we will handle internally and try not to drag you through it.
Yes, that's not, that's not your
You're, you're an innocent bystander in that part.
I appreciate what's going through and, and, um, so I, I need to apologize, you know, if, if there's anything that we, we don't, didn't mean to ca, I mean, that I know of. There was no malice intended. It might have been, um, you know, sloppy.
Well, you went through quite a personnel change too.
Yeah, as well as the town. You know, there's a different planning director. Ernie was part of our team at the time, and, and I agree with all that.
We're gonna, we're gonna make it all work. You guys are gonna make the butters happy. You're gonna fix everything.
Yeah, which we can read to you.
And it's all gonna, it's all gonna work out. But we're not ready to deal with the modification right now because we have pages and all sorts of other things that we need to deal with. Um, but you're I don't think that anything that we're doing right now is stopping you from, like, I don't think we're
No cease and desist has been
Like, you didn't get a cease and desist. So it's not like you can't do anything, um, even though we did vote for it, and, um, you aren't, aren't supposed to be doing anything. Um
I mean, there's, yeah, I mean
So, so we're, so we would like, so we would like to bump, I mean, I guess you're, you're paying for your attorney, so, um, that's, that's, that's the issue. But I don't, I don't think that any of us are prepared to review any plans. We need to kind of read, digest everything and do, and do, do our planning board business the way, um, prepared, like we normally are, um, when we get, when we, um, we have all the applicants that like to give us stuff really close to our, our, our meeting nights when we don't, and, and things just get a little crazy. We need to get through all this, and we'll, and we will have a, um, a, a normal, regular hearing, and we'll, everything will play itself out, um, and you're really gonna take care of the butters. Just make them
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we, I agree there. I mean, we've been working with those butters since the very beginning, so I, I agree with you. We plan to do that, so.
I know you will.
The authorities that's closest to it have been working with them.
Through the chair. So the most important thing in, in my mind is, is the decommissioning bond. What is a fair decommissioning bond for the town and for yourselves? To make sure that, that we're covered in case something happens. So we've been doing research there. We've just come up with numbers tonight. We've thrown some numbers out there from some of the estimates that we've gotten back to try to cover the town and cover the landowners for, for any possible things. If you have numbers that you think, if you've done your homework, and you know what it costs to decommission
If you have numbers that you think, if you've done your homework and you know what it costs to decommission the battery packs, please submit them. And we'll consider that too.
I think we submitted, and you'll notice that they're probably one-sixth of the numbers, one-sixth of the numbers.
One company.
Yeah. Have they been submitted to the board? Or do you have them?
Yeah, the decommissioning plan with the revised amount and the estimate at the bottom with an attachment for a quote has been provided.
We haven't had one for...
Which I didn't, I don't believe.
So, we can look at your numbers. We can compare those with what we see. The numbers that we're looking at are completely different than...
Literally one-sixth of the value. But then again, I mean, as I said, you could do another, and I'll ship them to Hawaii for 10 times the price, so.
What's that? That's Brookfield Road, yeah.
Yeah, we see Brookfield and Hockford Road.
Okay. I have another, there's another one. If I could call the company, if you guys can get me a copy, I'll call them and see if they handle this.
Here we go, Colburn Road.
Do you have one for Colburn Road?
That's, what batteries is that?
So, November 19th, 2019, is that your current...
Yep.
She does have one, right?
Is that most of the batteries?
November 19th, 2019.
Does that include the batteries?
Yes, the current panel ESS removal, which was reviewed by Graves and common honor approved by Graves.
Can you, um, can we, um, Gloria, a copy?
And these two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sure they're correct.
Well, this one has a main exam, but that's why I just wanted to ask that one.
Gloria, we'll thank you a copy of the...
Thank you.
Yep, ESS removal.
Okay, and that one? It has removal but not disposal, just like the panels. It had removal but not disposal. So can you tell me who you contacted for disposal of the batteries?
I can't, I can't, but...
These are all current.
It's not here.
We moved it from your side.
It's not here.
Where is that? I just don't know. They're obviously...
So what it's gonna cover us is if you don't remove them, we're gonna have to remove them.
Yeah, what's... I understand. We're happy to work with you guys on the decommissioning value.
You guys have a big backer. If there's an insurance bond, I'm sure that your company can easily afford us. And we're not, that's not, should not be a stressor point in any way. It's not, we're not asking for a million dollars, so.
Yeah, I mean, right now we're...
The town's covered for removal and disposal of the panels and the ESS.
We have to look into the bitter end if, say, the company walks away and then the company, the landowner finds out, I just can't afford this. Town, take my property. I'm gonna let you...
So just give perspective, so she had mentioned...
Now the town's stuck holding the bag, so we have to look at completely cleaning up that property.
She had mentioned 100,000 per megawatt. We're at 30,000 per megawatt. I'm sure we could come to an agreement somewhere that's happy for the town and us.
Again, it's a hazardous waste, so it can't go in landfills. Models can't go in landfills. This is new.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is new.
So you guys will have your engineer, you know, give it so we can, I mean, we're open to facts. We'll look at facts and we'll... It'll all, we'll all get through it.
I got a question, please. If you're getting emails complaining about my land, how come I'm not hearing about them?
Um, they were, they're not...
It's not for saying about your land. It's about what they're doing.
I know. It says something about a brook and stuff like, mentioned something about a brook.
That's on their land.
So on the, on the...
But I haven't affected any brook.
On the president's...
No, I haven't. I'm sorry.
Oh, you can get, you can e-mail them.
They ran underground wire to the...
Directional pouring, yes.
It's in the even area on your neighbor's land that was done as a result of the underground wiring. That had nothing to do with anything you've done with the whole land.
Yep.
What day? When do we wanna do it again?
February 6th.
February 6th.
So the 6th or 5th?
Motion to adjourn to February 6th.
6th or 5th?
6th, sorry.
You feel folks feel comfortable? Is that your next move? Is that...
Do you want it then or do you...
Yeah, no, do it then because, I mean, they're taking the time. I think that they wanna get this thing wrapped up.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's just one. You gotta do the next one.
No, no.
Let's continue the next one. It makes sense, right?
Make a motion, continue Colburn Road.
I said they combined them. I abstained.
I gotta re-talk off Colburn.
Oh, so did I. Okay, I'm sorry. Which one are we doing now?
So this, the meeting we're having was for, yeah, Osgood, so...
Colburn.
Just look and look do what he's not gonna make.
Yeah, I have to abstain from Osgood.
Okay, so I'm making a motion. We continue the Osgood solar field till February 5th.
Second.
Favor, I...
Abstain.
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue Colburn Road solar field until February 5th.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Housekeeping.
Oh, I need to. I love the debate. We're fine. You're still my favorite Blair. We're good.
I know, you know.
There's nothing better than I loved the debate, Blair.
Friends, folks.
We are good.
Thank you. Bye. Good night, Natalie.
I'll use it to moon on my shirt.
We can get that one. We didn't like that.
He did an hour of the job.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was fun.
We have, we're gonna release the Boucher Center's property.
Yes.
Boucher, Boucher?
Boucher Road. Write the cell through the final Q and A of...
14, Lot 14?
Lot 14, Boucher.
Yeah, Lot 14, Boucher Road.
Everything's good on it, clear on it?
So all we're doing is recommending that to take no action on it?
Town takes no action on it.
Make a motion that we recommend the town take no action on 61A, possibly release for Lot 14.
Second.
Removing it from 61A so they can...
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I gotta sneak out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you too.
Butter for Osgood or Colburn?
I don't know.
Colburn, Colburn.
All right.
Want some to ensure?
Is there any other business at town, any other business?
We are...
Actually...
Chuchubos. Yeah, oh, we don't do that. Oh, yeah, we can all do...
I was just going to, because the planning board is intervenors, I just wanted to give you a quick statement on our LNG.
That sounds great.
The, all the hearings have been held between the siting board, I had to attend a couple of them, as well as other people in the town. The, after the hearings were done, the NEC, the company, had to submit a brief and then, yeah, earlier in the month, and then everybody, all the interveners had to submit a brief by yesterday, which they did because they blew up my computer. I got numerous ones. I have to say that, I mean, it's completely in the hands of the siting board at this time, but there is a lot of valid information that was submitted with the briefs of the interveners and everything that the town has a leg to stand on. One of, a couple of things happened in the middle of all this is, one, Charlton's the first town that's been to the state siding board that has actually had LNG regulations in their bylaws, which is, one of the arguments they've been saying, they exempted from the stone bylaws because the town didn't know what they're doing now. Charlton's the first town that had been there that had actually addressed it. Charlton's also the first town that has been there without a host community agreement. Tiffany, the siding board, wants to see that because it's like, oh, the town's working with it great. In Charlton's case, there is no host community agreement, so that is not working favorably. And this, I actually have to give credit to some of the abutters, some of the other interveners on it. It was pointed out that the NEC has never built an LNG plant before. They market them and then have somebody else build them. So that they, and they, some of the approaches they use for building an LNG plant are not tried and true approaches, you know, more cost-effective, which is not tried and true. That's been pointed out that they haven't, they haven't built a LNG plant. They, you know, they market them, then they're selling the package to somebody else. And the methods that they're using are not necessarily the tried and true methods. Also, it's been pointed out that they were building this plant double the capacity of what they have contracts with Natural Grid on. They only need 1 million gallons. They propose a 2 million gallon tank. So needs to say, there's a lot of issues that are actually working favorably to the town. And credit to all the interveners that have submitted briefs and everything. It's like, you know, if you go Route 20, we can really work with you, you know. It's a site-specific, you know, issue that everybody has. It's not that Charlton doesn't want it, the interveners don't want it, it's just that they don't feel that Route 169 is the appropriate location, so.
But Charlton hasn't been, like, negative. We've been, we say we want you, but we just don't want you so close to all the residents and...
And that's what I mean. Many of the briefs actually stated the fact that, you know, looking at, you know, if the... They, some of them have actually said, I wouldn't have opposition to it if it was on the Route 20 site, you know, in the actual brief. So, I mean, they made crystal clear what, whether NEC's gonna do anything or not, I don't know. And actually, some of the abutters or interveners have said that if you give NEC permission to put it there, I'm going to appeal. So, you know, and they, one of whom actually I know is the owner of a business over there. They've actually saving their money because they were gonna do some upgrades and everything to it and they realized attorney costs are expensive and they're saving their money for improvements to the business because they intend to, if they have to, you know, spend money on attorneys for an appeal. So regardless of what happens with the siding board, it's not, they're not building it anytime soon. So hopefully, they can see the light at the end of the tunnel that maybe they ought to rethink the location, so we'll see.
Well, they went from double, four, 10 times the size of the property at half the amount, half, 1 million, and then they went to like a little teeny baby little parcel, and then they wanna do 2 million, all consolidated. There's so many incredible issues, so many safety issues, so many schools closed, so many daycares, so many, you know, like, it just doesn't make practical sense.
Well, that's one thing I can say. The Charlton Fire Department did a phenomenal job, Dennis, how amazing.
They just gonna breeze it through.
That, how they presented it, that, you know, the site's up here and the fire department, they're down here. They pull up to it on Route 169. And then there's this retaining wall. They can't see into the site. They can't drive into this. They're not gonna drive into something. They don't know what's going on. And they can't see into the site. So if they got to the site to fight a fire or emergency, they can't even see what to do. So they're not gonna, they can't effectively, you know, address an emergency situation.
What if, I mean, what if, what if somebody had a heart attack? I mean, down to like that simple. We're not talking about this place like has a meltdown, but it's the medical issue that's dead.
Yeah, so just from a state decision, the fire department made a very good case on how this site is not conducive to, you know, being able, something to be addressed up for emergency services. And actually, they, one of the, it was kind of a joke that, one of the items they use for fighting this type of fire is foam. The closest one is in Worcester. I mean, you have to go get it. Well, the applicant volunteered to put one on the site. And it's like, the fire department's like, how is that gonna help us?
We can't get down yet.
Can't get to it.
So I gotta give the fire department a lot of credit. They put a lot of thought into it.
So is there any indication on when the decision will come through?
It's next month.
Next month?
Next month?
Supposed to be next month.
Did, was it Amy have any feeling about how it was gonna go?
She actually thought it was going well for the town.
Well, for the town, okay.
So...
Which is pretty amazing because remember at the beginning when all the discussion was around, we have no say. We can't do anything. Suck it up buttercups and sign your hosting agreement and get as much cash as you can. That was what, the, all the discussion around and, and there were some strong people, the LNG committee, there's some strong people. And it wasn't, it wasn't about anything besides the resident's safety. It was about, it was, I have to give credit to Rob Lanzky. It was, it was about, we need to keep our residents safe. If this costs money for an attorney at this cost, we need to keep our residents, what if something happened? Such a consolidating, it's, again, it's a safety issue. It isn't about anything besides the safety. Charlton wants the revenue, you've always said. This is, this made, it looks like it's almost a million dollars in revenue and taxes. That's like huge for us. So find someplace else to go that's safe.
Yeah, and they saw it to a nonprofit, we can stay.
I honestly don't think they'll go away as a result of not getting the Route 20, the Route 169 side. I think they'll go back.
You think they'll look out at Route 20 again?
Yeah, I think they'll try again. And I know the...
It's like proud and happy.
Yes, and the option's still available to them, so, you know, he's...
We thought...
The option's still available, let's put it that way, to go back over to Route 20.
I'm sure.
And also, you know, to thank Captain Carlson from the fire department for the great work he did for this.
Yeah, he, I have...
He was at all the hearings, right?
Yeah, he did an excellent job presenting it from a state standpoint. One of the other factors too is that the fact that they haven't said what they would do for the town as far as, you know, the fire department need training, equipment, blah, 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 and they haven't committed to anything. And so the town's saying, currently, we don't have the capacity to fight any emergency that have, event that would happen at that site. And they haven't said that they'll do anything to help the town with that. And that's in itself huge, forgetting all the other factors.
And credit where credit's due. I mean, honestly, Randy came in during the craziest time in all of Charlton's history.
He survived, so.
Yeah, he's a fire by fire.
And how he jumped in, I mean, caught up and actually found some, you know...
Big loopholes.
Big loopholes in the plan that, that were there for, you know, for coming into a new state, into a crazy town with a colorful board.
Colorful.
Colorful board. Thank you so much, really jumping up. And, and the amount of aid that he's, I mean, the amount that he's done for the LNG committee, not even really part of the job, but really just stepping up. We're, so thank you. It was a, it was a, there's a lot going on.
And I didn't mean loopholes. I meant the emissions on the drawings.
Yeah, and just...
Right, right.
On all those, yeah.
Well, I think it started with Patsy filing for being an intervener too. You got on it at the get-go.
Yeah.
And we were behind that. I personally thought it was a done deal because we're so far behind. In June, we're supposed to have been filed by June and we were just...
The LNG committee is, honestly, that, what an awesome, like, common sense, get the job done board. We're, we, it was really a, good people who really thought about the town completely.
Yeah, and actually, I guess Patsy does deserve credit for the foresight of being an intervener because the board of selection found out late in the beginning, it's like, oh, we're not intervening, so we have no say in the matter. Because when the errands came along, they wanted, and they had no say in the matter because they were not intervening. So it did make a big difference on being able to be involved, so.
And hopefully it all turns out and we get our tax revenue. We get, we get a big, you know...
We don't get the nice energy park though, if that, you know, the, they had the energy park, because they're not the big, the solar...
I live close enough to have a floor in my house.
Energy quarter.
Walk your dog at the...
Well, we can start a Route 20 energy quarter. Where anything, we want revenue on 20, bring them in.
Do they usually want a lot?
They use a lot of water.
When that facility was first developed on Route 20, I don't know if you, how much the planning board was involved way back in the beginning, but the whole, one of the proposals for that site was to be able to bring natural gas into town where the town would actually benefit from natural gas and also going to disturb it because the location made it, they could go this way. So it benefited them to pick that location, the original owners of the project.
That was just a straw dog they were throwing out there. I don't think they ever had any intentions of...
Yeah, our ground is here too many blocks in our ground. They could never run anything.
I think they were just saying that, that's my personal belief, trying to sell it.
No, but I, the, I think the Route 20 location has a better opportunity. I'm not saying it'll ever happen, you know, but... The more tree houses and places like that that you get on Route 20, the more beneficial.
And as things come in, the higher trip numbers, trip, other things, and so slow growth, slow, slow smart growth.
You're freaking Grenoa, Brian. So it might be a trade joke.
And then maybe Trader Joe's will say, we'd really like to be located near LNG facility. We now have LNG Trader Joe's, do you want that account? Whatever.
Well, that, that, even that piece of land where the LNG site, even if the facility's there, there's a huge chunk of land can be developed over there, so.
Can we talk to Dan and see if he can actually, you know, woo them in for a tour, they could have the LNG in the back and Trader Joe's right in front. Um, we have some bills.
I just wanted to make sure we don't.
Do we have to vote on them, we just need to.
No.
The, I'd love to hear this, so we're down, we, the board of selectmen gave us our thirty-five thousand, we're down to twenty-eight hundred on that, um, a lot of this was, um, the, the requests on the subdivision, um, um, McKay had to kind of get involved with both that emails and start reviewing that, that giant request that they made of the town hall and all this, so a lot of, a lot of money was eaten up dealing with that, uh, that we didn't expect, so we got, we have fifty, so, um, when the next week, there shouldn't be much going on, it's really a hurry up and wait game, um, there's that extension till March, so, um, we, there shouldn't be too many things unless, um, the applicant decides, unless the, decides to like do something to make our costs go up, there shouldn't be really much going on and hopefully there'll be enough left at the end to kind of get through the last, um, piece of this, um, so there's some, there's some bills in here to re, to review, um, in, in, eight, just payable, the sign-on bills, the accounts payable, those two over there.
I did send a C M R P to let them know that, um, we, with the RFP for zoning bylaws, so.
Yeah, I did talk to Ron and I talked to Janet over there and they're both aware of it, that the letter's gonna be coming through.
I, yes, it went out last week, but we hadn't gotten it yet, I don't know, but.
Yeah, when did I send it, it's on last Thursday, so they hadn't gotten it yet, but I'm sure they.
Yeah, because I sent it, I addressed it to Ron, so.
If anybody knows of anybody, um, Census Bureau is looking for people to help out.
Knock on doors and.
I'm not sure exactly what it is, but they want, okay, it's twenty-two bucks an hour.
What?
For the Census Bureau, you can work full-time, part-time, whatever you want, probably make your own hours, it's just something that they're really, it was seventeen or nineteen dollars, they raised it up to twenty-two, Boston's paying twenty-seven.
Wow.
Yeah. If you know anybody.
Is there an age limit on the wage?
I don't think so.
That's the Census Bureau, what they call it. Good summer job for a kid.
Get out, get out to work, it's cold out there, twenty-two bucks an hour.
Knock on doors, chasing down people.
Yeah, and I guess it's not going to, that probably won't start till like April, I don't think, because you have to let them give time for, um.
Yeah, I have my, sitting on my counter, gotta go fill it out.
No, that's town.
Oh, town one, all.
That's different, okay, the federal one is.
U S Census, yeah, that's the big one.
Is there anything else?
Just the bills, just, all of our signatures?
Um, we can, do we, do we have anything else, want to, Jer?
E D C guy.
Anything on?
Um, we're just waiting, um, the, the board of selectmen, they want to wait for the new T A, um, to help decide, um, so, which I find interesting because they're the T A's boss, so they, but, but, um, that's fine, um, whatever they, whatever they, so eventually they'll decide.
Starting date's February third.
Third, I thought. Maybe we should invite him to the first planning board.
We should, we should definitely formally invite him to our planning board meeting and the fifth one will be, the fifth will be a great meeting.
Yeah, he actually has been a planning board member before.
There you go, yeah.
When I spoke with him, yeah.
So, Greg, did he come around and talk with you guys?
Yeah, he came, uh, the chief brought him in, he was one day to meet everybody in the different departments, so I spoke with him a few minutes.
Has he started or is this?
No, he, yeah, that's his start date, February third, but I think he's gonna fit well, do well with the town, he seems like he's a good fit for Charlton.
Okay, can we vote, would you, motion to Jer?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.